Welcome to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Number one is Recycling Committee Discussion of the Whole. Would like to start off with this. There you go.
Well, Michelle's not here. Why are we echoing? Somebody must have this on. Turn it off. Oh, you moved things. Okay. We currently have the recycling committee in place and their request is that the Board of Commissioners provide them a direction on if they're still needed and what functions you would like them to explore. So that is the direction they are looking for, which is why it is a discussion of the whole for your determination.
I would like to see it myself. Where do we move on at this point with funds and all that to continue? That's going to bounce back to...
That's okay. There are grant opportunities out there. There was one that actually was brought to my attention about a month ago, but at that time, the recycling committee is so unsure of what their status is and where they should be working that I wasn't able to have anybody come forward to give information to the person that was willing to write the grant. But they will continue to flow as the state is trying to pan out this American Rescue Plan Act money for certain purposes. So there are for studies for countywide recycling, to dispose of household hazardous waste materials. Those are the two main grants that I have seen so far. So the question is, is that the direction that the board would still like the recycling committee to focus themselves on? If they can pass household hazardous waste or disband until such time, we have a better idea of where things go.
I just want we not lose this. At the last meeting, last two Wednesdays ago, it was brought up that the governor's office has issued DEQ directions to increase recycling. So we may have more grant opportunities coming through that way, but I just do not allow this organization to disband because we'll never get it back in place again. Should monies become available.
Who do we go forward regarding filling the grants out? Who would that be?
So their leadership has been on a medical leave of absence, their traditional leader. We have had a few of them here before and they are willing to move forward as long as they're pretty clear on what that direction is for you guys, that you do want them to move forwards.
We have Scott here.
Okay.
It is imperative, not only for, it's imperative for the residents of our county, for and our people that regulate the wilderness. This is one of the most important meetings that we must keep in place. I can be more strong, my vision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Eric.
I agree 100% with Mark. I think if it's a matter of money, I'm wanting to hear what is happening with the payments in lieu of insurance. I don't know, I think Jody's probably going to be reporting on that because I was going to ask her if some of the money that we save there could be applied towards that, that'd be a way to fund it. I think recycling is very important. My wife doesn't like it that much, but I do it a lot and it certainly is something we need to keep in place.
At the last meeting, it was brought up that they found enough money to do it this spring, the hazardous waste recycling. Probably not enough money to do it after that again.
Afterwards, Scott, if you could meet with me and you sit on the committee rocks, the three of us, and we'll move forward.
There is a meeting at 12 o'clock today.
Oh, okay. Then that's what I was going to ask if they could put a meeting together.
Yeah, we'll invite you.
Won't be able to make today's meeting, but I'm glad to be in the meeting. I thought the meetings were dissolved, so. Yes, sir.
So if you're going to meet on that afterwards, I'm going to supervise your membership and I have no time to discuss it. I'll bring my last year.
Okay. Are you available at noon?
They have the meeting over here, room 101.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Rex. Number two, IT Andy. I don't see Pat.
I think Pat actually got called away on a project.
Okay.
Good morning. So...
Put your mic on, please. Just joking. He's always funny inside. Yeah.
On the upgrades for our IT stuff we have going on so far, server, our server and storage array are end of life, meaning that manufacturer will no longer support it, which also means that there will be no more security updates provided by that. And that leaves us with a big security concern. So that's why we are upgrading to a more current server and storage array. Along with that, we're upgrading the operating system for the server, excuse me. And also with that, we are upgrading our exchange operating system. Our email is going to be upgraded as well. So we are up to date with everything.
When's this going to take place, or?
A physical install is tentatively this Friday. And then we have to do the software programming and then migration of everything that we have on our old server and storage array. We have to migrate it over to the new one and that could take about a month or two. Reason being is we want to do it slowly, purposefully, so we don't lose anything. And also, we need to do it so we don't interrupt day-to-day operations. You're welcome.
Yes. Also, the email service that we currently use, I understand that is the end of life also. What is going on with that?
That's part of the exchange. The exchange software that we're upgrading.
So it's going to be Microsoft Exchange is what we're going to update?
That's what we are right now. We're at Microsoft Exchange release 2013. We're going to go to 2019. That is the most current.
Office 365 or?
No. Okay. They'll still use Outlook.
Is it's going to be a different look entirely? I understand is that it's going to be something that's going to reside on our computer? Is it going to be live on the internet still?
It'll be just like it is now.
Just going to be a newer version?
Yep, just a newer version. So the one that will be actually supported from Microsoft. So then we can get those security patches.
Understand it's much more user-friendly. Have you looked at it?
I've looked at it and it looks almost identical to what we have now.
Really?
So it shouldn't be much of a learning curve, if any at all.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. Does anybody have any other questions for Andy? I know he's been working on this project for some time now. Okay, thank you. Number three, Second Amendment. Excuse me, Eric.
Thank you. I'll introduce you to some of the folks that are working on the Second Amendment Sanctuary County. I guess project is what you call it. There, I understand there's over 51 some odd counties and I'll turn this over.
Yeah, I'm Tom Van Warmer.
Can you push your button so the green light's on, please? Thank you.
We're the delegate, Gary's Township. We have handed out some packages here. We're proposing a resolution for making Roscommon County a sanctuary. Second Amendment Sanctuary. And we've actually, I've got some other colleagues here with me that are here as well. But we've got a resolution that we drafted here, proposal for you guys to look at as well as this map, which shows the current counties that are, that have this status right now. Counties have already passed resolutions. And there's a couple, you know, there's some, our Second Amendment is under attack. I'm sure you know that in Lansing. Bills that have been introduced in the House. And so some of those bills are referenced here. This, this one concealed carry. It's, well, made out everywhere, gun free zone where you came. If you have concealed carry license, won't be able to carry. I want to see that in our town. A lot of those laws enforcement are unconstitutional. It's the Second Amendment. Have some videos that we'd like you to watch. Couple of videos that voted correct. Watch those videos.
Are the bad guys still going to be able to carry these? Are the bad guys that have a gun, are they still going to go to these areas?
I mean, the bad guys are always going to, they don't want to see everybody that doesn't have, you know, can't carry either.
Cease his question.
This particular, you know, you can't even leave in your vehicle. So you go to the bank, you can't leave with your vehicle and go in the bank. Very permit, I mean, I've had one about all my life, almost all my life. And they were restricted, you know, back in the old days, they were restricted banking and business or hunting and target, this type of thing. But you wouldn't even be able to carry in the bank. So. And you can't leave in your vehicle. I lived in Genesee County. I had a banking, banking and business restriction. Left my firearm in the console. My vehicle was broken into, vehicle was stolen. Next time I got a concealed carry license for the gun board, Genesee County, told them that story, I ended up with a general license. I could carry it anywhere, just unfortunately. Changed the law and stick in Michigan. They'll carry laws that can't carry unless you are in law courts. Restrictions. Oh, or that's law. But I... This will restrict that to the point where... You have questions? All right, let's watch the video. A reminder of why, you know, what the Second Amendment is for and about.
Much for the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to speak tonight on this resolution. I think one of the most important things that we all need to take into consideration with this is that when we look at the Second Amendment, this wasn't written by people that had just come back from a robust hunting trip. They had just come back from actually having to defend their rights against a tyrannical government. And I think there's a lot of times where we kind of glaze over when we think about the idea of why the Second Amendment exists in the first place. This is not about hunting, it's not about gun collecting. It is about each human being's inherent right to be able to defend themselves. And one of the things I just do not understand about this argument, because when we look at some of the bills that are actually going before the General Assembly this year, we're not just, we're not just talking about the same old stuff that we've seen the last several years, we're actually talking about legislation that would potentially put law-abiding citizens in a situation. If I have a 17-year-old daughter, which I do, and she actually has to pick up a firearm in order to defend herself because someone is kicking in the door in our house in rural Culpeper, is she now a criminal? According to SB 16, she may very well be, or I might be a criminal since it was my firearm. These are the sort of unintended consequences that don't seem to be taken into consideration when these bills are written. But it goes beyond even more than that. We've already seen the sheriff speak, we've had a lot of veterans in the audience tonight. And one of the things that I have always found very interesting about the experience of US military veterans is the oath that we swear. The oath is not to the President of the United States, it's not to a king, it's to the Constitution of the United States, it's to an idea. And the idea, the idea that I would have to tell friends of mine that I served with in combat who are still serving, who are still serving in combat, I would have to tell them that upon their arrival home, having gone overseas, having fought for their country, having put themselves in between those who would harm the United States, that the very rights that they went over to protect could now be infringed upon, that it could be their own law enforcement personnel, their own neighbors wearing the uniform of a sheriff's deputy or a town police officer coming through their door to confiscate their property? That is an injustice. We have an obligation at all levels of government. And what I am asking for you to do today is at your level of government, as Bryce Reeves, myself and others continue to fight at the State House, I am asking that this Board of Supervisors make it clear under no uncertain terms that we will always be a nation, we will always be a commonwealth that recognizes the inherent right of free people to be able to defend themselves and that we will brook no aggression from a government or anyone else that would strip us of that right. So I thank you for your service on this board and I ask for passage of the resolution. I want the second one run out after mine. Dry talk.
Okay. There's more legislation going to be introduced about, there's assault weapons bill that's being prepared to be entered. Speaker in Lansing. Over the weekend. Back to the... It would be, there's going to be, you know... Law-abiding citizens wanting firearms or, you know... Bottom, you know, there's already the bill about... I'm just going to turn it over to Dan.
Thank you all for serving as commissioners. We need more elected people to stand up for us. I'm Dan Bonomi. I'm the township supervisor over in Beaver Creek Township. I'm also the chair for the Crawford County GOP and I was just elected onto the Republican state. I represent 36 counties now. I'm here today because our Second Amendment rights are under attack 100%. Our rep center senator talked to multiple times a week on this. I'll give you just a brief update on a couple of things that are there. There's 19 House bills and 11 Senate bills as of last week that have all to take, constrain our Second Amendment rights. As Tom had talked about, concealed carry holders was the newest one at the end of last week. He touched on banks and whatnot, but also gas stations, if they sell alcohol, your grocery store, I can't allow to carry into them anymore. If you want to leave it in your car, that same bill says you cannot lock it in your car. Essentially, if I'm taking off for Traverse City for the day with my kids and I want to have my gun with me, I can't even lock it in my car with you. Takes it back into protection of my kids at home. They also introduced another one that's called Safe Storage. If you have children in the house or, way I read it, even if you don't have children in the house and some of them break into your house, your gun is not locked up, does not have a trigger guard on it, unloaded and kept separate from the ammunition, you now are going to be charged if that child went in at 17 and under, takes that gun and harms somebody with a five-year felony. If they kill somebody with that gun, you're going to be up for a 15-year felony because you didn't have a gun locked by their regulations. I live on a farm myself, out of the city of Greeley, and I live just over the county line right here. Who my daughters have left home now, but every one of my kids learned to shoot when they're five, six years old and they all shot their first deer at nine years old. They were taught by instructors on how to have proper gun safety. They always had at least two weapons at my home that they knew were there for safety and security of our home. I live three quarters of a mile off a road dead end, it land all the way around me. When somebody comes through my gate, 300 yards up, we know either they're there for us or they're not there for us. We've had three instances in the last six years, twice my wife was home and once I was home where people didn't see a vehicle and they were casing, looking through our garage, looking through everything before we came out with our weapon and escorted them off where they took off before the police could get there. I have a 15-year-old son at home. Been hunting all his life. He's a great shooter. Probably one of the best shooters that I know for his age, let alone else. He has a 308 rifle sitting next to his bed. He has target rounds and varmint rounds there. We've shot eight coyotes trying to get our animals in our yard this year. With the new law that's coming in, if I don't have my gun locked up when he's home, I'm going to be charged with a misdemeanor just for having it unlocked, let alone having him the ability to protect himself or my farm. So they are making an exception now for farms only in that rule. But I look at the Constitution or Michigan Constitution on top of that, every individual has a right to keep and bear arms. Doesn't say they got to be 18. They have the right to defend themselves. They're going to take every bit of that away if any of this legislation goes through. As a township supervisor, they are now introduced a law that says 40 days before an election and until absentee counting is done, you cannot have a weapon at a polling location. As the supervisor, I cannot protect my people during election timeframe. We have four election cycles next year. That means essentially for 200 days, a township isn't even open that much. I cannot have a weapon on that property. They're telling that to us as a township that we can't protect ourselves. I don't know how many precincts and polling locations you guys have in your county, but I'm going to demand that my, if this goes through, that my sheriff department puts an officer at our building every day that we can't protect ourselves. Because there's no reason, my clerk comes to me and asks me to carry, and I probably shouldn't be saying this on the public record, but during those timeframes, I carry and multiple others in my department carry, just because we don't know what's going to happen. We've had some crazy stuff happen for the last few election cycles and we want to make sure that if there's a mass shooting event, we're there to protect and help our people. The state is taking that away from us. They're creating a license in one of the bills that every single gun has to be licensed to one person. You had a threat and you didn't have a gun at your house, I couldn't give you a shotgun for you to keep for the next couple of days because I would be illegal and so would you with it licensing laws. It's similar to a pistol law. Today, if you have a concealed carry permit, you can use a pistol. But if you don't have a concealed carry permit, you're not allowed to use. Or so. The other thing, they have red flag laws. They are developing a, and that's been proposed for two weeks and it's moving through, some of these are jumping committee and going right to vote this week, by the way. Red flag laws, they are going to, anybody that has had a relationship with you in the past, they could have been a second grade girlfriend that thinks you can be doing harm to yourself or others, petition to court. In that language, the court has 24 hours to review the case and issue a statement on it. At that point in time, if they feel that that statement was enough, there's a list of things that they can use against you. One of them is if you bought a gun or ammunition in the last six months, that's a reason for them to flag you, have something against you. I don't know about you guys, but my kids shoot 22 monthly and I'm always ordering bullets. So I guess I'm going to be open to that really quick. But if that goes through and that judge finds that there is a reason in that statement, they're going to you and taking your guns. I like a restraining order. They're asking the police to go and take the guns from that person. They're going to license them all so they know how many you have and then they're going to take them. I don't know about you, but due process is huge to me. And our constitution says you cannot take my property without due process. That's property. Guns are property. So this gets passed Second Amendment with that. As Tom said, there's, as of two weeks ago, my last count was 51 counties that have signed resolutions. And attorneys look at laws on the books, but we also have to look at common law. God gave us a right to protect ourselves. What we're asking is for you guys to, a resolution that says in Roscommon County, we're going to create a sanctuary to where we're not going to take and look at these red flag laws, any of these things that are unconstitutional, because we know the Supreme Court's going to throw these out. They've already done it in New York in the Brunn case, there's a number, we could sit and list our cases, but it's going to take three, four, or five years for it to get to the Supreme Court. So your citizens are going to be now, as these go through, a lot of them are not going to register their guns. You're going to take and create a problem where law-abiding citizens are turned into felons overnight, a number of them. So we're asking that you guys for resolution and this is we are not going to enforce unconstitutional laws. That's what 51 other counties have done already. We're on the agenda tomorrow. Crawford County's been working on it, had a new draft for them. Either there's, might be one or two other ones that have been accepted this week. So this, in Lansing, they're not allowing our people to speak, they're not allowing our senators and our congressmen right now from the organization. They're gabbling them down, they're pushing them through, not allowing amendments to be heard, calling them out by the amendment number, saying, nope, nope, nope. We at least give these resolutions to them, they can show that majority of counties in northern Michigan are against all of this. We give them some ammunition to work with along with protecting citizens. So with that, if you have any questions?
Yeah, yeah. What will it mean exactly by passing a resolution? Does that mean that our local police and so forth are just not going to enforce this? Or I mean, what is, what does this, would this really do?
I've sent forward a few resolutions from other areas. Musaki County was great. Their prosecutor, their sheriff helped. They're not going to give, county commissioners there have decided they're not giving one penny of the county's tax dollars in force unconstitutional acts. So if the sheriff or if your prosecutor decides to do that, they're ready to pull funding from that department. They're going to protect us in any way from in that county. You guys have the right to do that. You have the ability to do that. They're an elected official, you can't tell them what they can or can't do, but you do...
You can't actually pull the funding from an already budgeted elected official. That's court rulings. So that would be one thing they... Not really. You'd have to prove why you have to take it, so.
They're doing it in other counties. That's what we're asking you to look at. And then also send a message to your sheriff and prosecutor that we don't agree with this. I guarantee you, majority of your constituents, most of them have guns registered, so that... Ask yourself, we all as elected officials took an oath to the constitution. 1931, Germany, the Democrat socialists put right in their laws when they created their gun registry that this cannot get into the wrong hands. What happened four years later, Hitler took over. They went door to door, took guns and told you. If it's in our constitution that we have the right to bear arms, main reason is in case there's a tyrannical government that takes over. We give them a license, licensing requirements and give them the ability to know where every one of our guns are, they're just going to come one by one to our houses before they even try to take us over if there's ever... Me, as an elected official, I feel my office is to protect the people's rights, their common law rights.
Thank you. Number four.
No, 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 we're not, we're not anywhere near being done, Dave. We got more people to talk and I got to talk about this.
I will be brief. My name is Cam Jones.
My name is Cam Jones. I'm a South Branch Township resident in Crawford County. I'm retired Army Sergeant First Class, twenty-two years in the Army, twenty-one years after that, serving our country too. So I have a vested interest in the constitution in the United States and not, and in Michigan as well. A lot of folks don't know, you know, everybody's pretty much familiar with the second amendment. My friend Nick Freitas, I know he's very well. He's a great, he laid out some great things there about the second amendment. A lot of people don't know that our Michigan constitution reinforces that. Article one, section six is very unambiguous. You know, there's a lot of debate about the second amendment, but our constitution says in no uncertain terms that the citizens have the right carry a weapon in their home and in public for the defense of themselves in the state. And it's like one sentence and that's kind of a paraphrase, but that's basically what it says. These lawmakers are down there trying to, to take away that right. If they start telling you where you can carry a weapon, when you can carry it, what you can use it for, they're taking away your constitutional right. We have not given them that authority. That constitution was written by the people of this state as federal constitution was written by the founders, the citizens of the country. We have not given them a right to tell us what kind of firearm we can own. We have to register it, where we can carry it and what we can use it for. You, you, like I, have taken that oath many times. I'm sure several of you, at least taken it once. To uphold and defend those constitutions. And you have the right, the power to protect the citizens that live in your jurisdiction against the unconstitutional laws that these folks are going to pass down there. Now, as Dan pointed out, these laws that they'll pass will probably be overturned. I mean, there's been similar, similar laws passed in Illinois and some other states after the last election cycle. And, you know, they're going to be challenged. Those things take years. In the meantime, people go to jail. If I pass these laws, I'm not registering any firearms I may have. I'm not going to do it. We don't have a register, a gun registry in Michigan, right? Except when you buy a gun, you have to register it. So now they're going to tell you, you got to register all kinds of guns. And, and, and a lot of this is just based on appearance. This is not going to solve the problem that we see like with the MSU shooter, that, that guy was, was known by law enforcement. He was in the hands of law enforcement, could have been arrested, could have had his right to own firearms taken away. They didn't do it. Then a few days later, he turns up and shoots people. It ain't going to stop the problem. The problem is not a gun problem. It is a people problem. And taking away the rights of law abiding citizens like myself and you to defend ourselves is not going to solve the problem. So we're asking, we're asking Crawford County and other counties as well, we're working with those folks, that these, the county governments have the right, have the right to protect your citizens by refusing to enforce unconstitutional laws. We're asking you to take that step to, to, to be brave enough to go against a, the state doesn't get to tell you what to do. They make laws, yes. If they're constitutional, fine, but if they're unconstitutional, you have every right and the power to defend your citizens against those, those unconstitutional laws.
How would we do that is I passed a resolution, how would we do that? He mentioned, you know, not, not allowing the prosecutors and/or the sheriffs. Do we have to get their cooperation in doing this? Or how would that work?
It certainly would help to have that cooperation from those, those folks. Largely, a lot of these resolutions largely symbolic, in my opinion. You can, you know, if you can, if you can stop government or taxpayer money from being used to enforce these laws, then, you know, I would by all means urge you to do that. But by sending a message that, you know, the citizens of this county and their elected officials are not going to support unconstitutional laws of any kind, not just, you know, this could be applied to other things too, not just the second amendment, but that's a huge one. They're trying to take away our right to defend ourselves, you know, and, and if you do that, then we're not free people anymore. You can throw every other article or amendment, the constitution's away if you can't defend yourself against a tyrannical government, then we're not free anymore. So, you know, I mean, like I said, it's very largely symbolic. But the fact that, you know, over, over fifty of eighty-three counties in this state have taken the step to tell the legislature, we're not enforcing your unconstitutional law. That's.
Good morning. I'll be brief. I've yet to hear what we're talking about stated, the word well regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state. Right of the people to keep bare arms till not be imprisoned. That's what we're talking about. I've been going around to my neighbors and friends, all of whom lost count. All of them are Democrats. They voted for Biden. They are all there. Bunch of supporters of the second. High partisan issue. But yeah, Republican, Democrat. Every single person I've talked to, often appalled, it's not reported in the press. White news, finance and state. They don't report these House bills that are being on their websites. A large number of the people here are not informed about what they, you know, little informant survey that our constituents are a hundred percent behind. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a few comments. What I have here is about two thirds plagiarized and the other third I have my own writing, so. I just want to go over a twenty sixteen report from the FBI. In twenty sixteen, there were thirty-two thousand gun related deaths per year by firearms, and this number is not disputed. June twenty-two, two thousand sixteen, FBI numbers. US population was, at that time was three hundred and twenty-four million, and that's only point zero zero nine eight seven percent of the population died from gun related actions that year. Statistically speaking, while very sad, it's a very insignificant number. What is never told however, is the breakdown of those thirty-two thousand deaths. To put them in perspective as compared to other causes of death, sixty-five percent of those deaths were by suicide. And gun laws never would have prevented that. Fifteen percent are by law enforcement in the line of duty and justified. Seventeen percent were through criminal activity, gang and drug related or mentally ill persons. Three percent are actual accidental discharge deaths. So technically gun violence is not thirty-two thousand annually, but it drops to fifty-one hundred. And it's still a lot. Okay, well, first, how are those deaths? Deaths spanned across the nation. Four hundred and eighty homicides were in Chicago. That's a lot higher now. Three hundred and forty-four were in Baltimore. Three hundred and thirty-three were in Detroit. Hundred nineteen were in Washington DC. So basically twenty-five percent of all gun crime happens in just four cities. All four of those cities have very, very strict gun laws. So it's not a lack of law that's the root cause. This basically leaves three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five for the entire rest of the nation are about seventy-five deaths per state. That's an average because some of the states have much higher rates than others. For example, California had one thousand one hundred and sixty-nine and Alabama had one. Now, who has the strictest gun laws by far? California, of course. But understand, it's not guns causing this. It's a crime rate spawned by the number of criminal persons residing in those cities and states. So if all cities and states are not created equally, then there must be something other than the guns causing the gun deaths. Fifty-one hundred deaths per year is terrible. All about in comparison to other deaths. All death is sad and especially so when it's in the commission of a crime, but that is the nature of crime. Robbery, death, rape, assault. It's all done by criminals and thinking that criminals will obey gun laws is ludicrous. That's why they're criminals. What about the other deaths every year? Over forty thousand die from drug overdose, and that was in twenty sixteen. Thirty-six thousand people die per year of the flu, far exceeding the criminal gun deaths. Thirty-four thousand die per year in traffic fatalities exceeding gun deaths, even if you include suicide. What about the thousands of lives saved by good guys with a gun stopping a bad guy with a gun? Or the women who carry and were able to fend off a rapist? Or the homeowner who was able to save themselves and their family members because they have a gun? What about them? So if we're really interested in reducing death, maybe we should propose reducing the speed limit, which would really reduce deaths. Move the speed limit back to fifty-five on the highways. Reduce it to forty-five on county roads, reduce the speed limit in other areas and triple the fines. That would dramatically reduce death and injury and would also, also dramatically reduce fuel consumption and probably make us energy independent again. I wonder how that would go over with everyone. Perhaps that's something we should have done instead of ruining lives by shutting everything down like we did during COVID, which resulted in a dramatic increase in suicide and drug usage. If we're really serious about death, that's what we should do. Reduce the speed limit since that's never been a, in a politician's agenda. One can only assume that they aren't really serious about anything except passing laws that control us and take away our rights, like the right to keep our firearms, which are our last resort of maintaining our control over them. Continuing with the statistics, over two hundred thousand people die each year and growing from preventable medical errors. You're safer in Chicago than you are in a hospital. Seven hundred and ten thousand people die per year from heart disease. It's time to stop the double cheeseburgers. So what's the point? If the anti-gun movement focused their attention on heart disease, even a ten percent decrease in cardiac deaths would save twice the number of lives annually of all gun related deaths, including suicide, law enforcement, et cetera. A ten percent reduction in medical errors would be sixty-six percent of the total gun deaths or four times the number of criminal homicides. Simple, easy, preventable, ten percent reductions. So you have to ask yourself in the grand scheme of things, why the focus on guns? It's pretty simple. Taking guns away gives control to governments. The founders of this nation knew that regardless of the form of government, those in power may become corrupt and seek to rule as the British did by trying to disarm the populace in the counties, colonies. It's not difficult to understand that a disarmed populace is a controlled populace. Thus, the second amendment was proudly and boldly included in the US constitution. It must be preserved at all costs. So the next time someone tries to say that gun control is about saving lives, look at the facts and remember the words from Noah Webster. Before a standing army can rule, the people must be disarmed as they are almost in every kingdom in Europe. The supreme power in America cannot enforce unjust laws by the sword because the whole body of the people are armed and constitute a force superior to any band of regular troops that can be on any pretense raised in the United States. A military force at the command of Congress can't execute no laws but such as the people perceive to be just and constitutional, for they will possess the power. Let's, let's be honest here. After understanding this, do you honestly believe that any more gun control laws will make America safer than any other control laws for any other potential risk? Be honest with yourself when you ask that question, answer that question. Finally, our governor and the Democratic Congress we have in Michigan know that their proposed legislation is unconstitutional and will be eventually overturned by the Supreme Court as it has in other states such as, under legislation such as New York and dozens of other states have upheld the second amendment rights. The same thing will happen here in Michigan. It's just a waste of time, money and energy and a distraction to the real problems we face like inflation, education, et cetera. If the Democrats know that, why are they moving forward trying to pass these laws to restrict our second amendment rights? It's because you just can't fix stupid. And that's why, that's what we have now in Lansing. A bunch of stupid Democrats trying to convince everyone that they care when they know darn well the laws that they passed are found to be unconstitutional. Fortunately, most of their constituents aren't stupid. What can we do about it? Resist, resist, resist. Pass a resolution in our county to let them know we aren't as stupid as they think we are and any laws they pass will not be enforced. We need to honor the oaths, our oaths of office and defend the constitution. And that includes the second amendment. We need to join the dozens of other counties in Michigan and make our county a sanctuary county for gun ownership. And I want to say one last thing before we play the video. This is a quote from Thomas Jefferson. When the government fears the people, there's liberty. When the fear, when the people fear the government, there's tyranny. And I'd like to play that Susanna Hubb video. This is a video from back in nineteen ninety-seven when the federal government was passing all the assault weapons bills and so forth. Thanks, Andy.
Make sure that you understand, I'm not here representing the NRA. I'm not even a member. Secondly, I'd like to say that in your opening statements, you commented that, you commented specifically on my testimony saying that basically it had nothing to do with this issue. And I had to chuckle because then I noticed you had Mr. Brady up here who was hit not with an assault weapon, but with a twenty-two caliber revolver. So getting beyond that, I didn't grow up in a house with guns. I don't hunt. I personally abhor hunting. But I was given a gun by a friend when I was twenty-one to carry in my purse for self-defense and I was taught how to use it. Couple of years ago, my parents and I went to a cafeteria in Texas on a bright sunny day. We weren't in a dark alley where we weren't supposed to be. And as you all know the story, this mad man drove his truck through the window. And he began shooting. Well, immediately, my father and I got down on the floor and put the table up in front of us. And this guy kept shooting and you're thinking, what, you know, what could it be? Is it a robbery? That's the first thing that generally comes to mind. And he keeps shooting. It took me a good forty-five seconds to realize that this man wasn't there to commit a robbery. He wasn't there for a hit. He was there to simply shoot as many people as he possibly could. Now, I'd like to make something clear. I hear all this talk about how many bullets can go in a clip. I've been there. I can tell you, it doesn't matter. It takes one second to switch out a clip. You can have one bullet or a hundred bullets. It doesn't matter, guys. I've been there. He goes, dump, dump. Just like that. That's not enough time to rush a man. I promise you. When I finally realized what was occurring, I thought, I got him. And I reached for my purse. He was maybe twelve feet away. You know, is it possible my gun could have jammed? Sure. Is it possible I could have missed? Sure. But I can tell you, I've hit much smaller targets at much greater distances. But then I realized that a couple of months earlier, I had made the stupidest decision of my life. I took my gun out of my purse and left it in my car. Because as you well know, in the state of Texas, it's sometimes a felony offense to carry a gun in your purse. I can tell you that I'm not mad at the guy that did this. As he continued, it was obvious that he was a madman. My father, at that point said, I'm going to, I just got to do something. I've got to do something. He's going to kill everybody in here and he rushed the man. No way. Guy turned and shot him in the chest. He went down, was obviously mortally wounded. For whatever reason, that made the man change directions and go off to my left. Shortly thereafter, someone at the back of the restaurant broke out a window. When I saw what looked like an opportunity to escape, I turned around and I grabbed my mother by the shirt and I said, come on, come on, we've got to run. We've got to get out of here. And then my feet grew wings and I was out the back window. As soon as I got out, I realized that my mother had not followed me out. And as I learned from the police officers, she had crawled over to where my father was and cradled him until the guy got back around her, put the gun to her head. She looked up at him, put her head down and he pulled the trigger. My parents had just had their forty-seventh wedding anniversary. She wasn't going anywhere. As I mentioned, I'm not really mad at the guy that did this. And I'm certainly not mad at the guns that did this. They didn't walk in there by themselves and pull their. They didn't walk in there by themselves and pull their own triggers. The guy that did it was a lunatic. That's like being mad at a rabid dog. I'm mad at my legislators for legislating me out of the right to protect myself and my family. I would much rather be sitting in jail with a felony offense on my head and have my parents alive. As far as these so-called assault weapons, you say that they don't have any defense use. You tell that to the guy that I saw on a videotape of the L.A. riots, standing up on his rooftop, protecting his property and his life from an entire mob with one of these so-called assault weapons. Tell me that he didn't have a legitimate self-defense use. Just one final statement. I'm, I've been sitting here getting more and more fed up with all of this talk about these pieces of machinery having no legitimate sporting purpose, no legitimate hunting purpose. People, that is not the point of the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment is not about duck hunting. And I know I'm not gonna make very many friends saying this, but it's about our rights, all of our rights to be able to protect ourselves from all the you guys up there.
Thanks, guys. That's what it is all about. It's our rights. Thank you. Number four, excuse me, third-party administrator controller, John Trek. Oh, you did? Oh, we gotta move it along.
Okay. I'm spent too much time on it. On this subject, I'm all for protecting the Second Amendment. But I think if we're gonna have a resolution, maybe a committee of two or whatever or however, we need to draft our own resolution.
Sure, these are just drafts and suggestions that they've made for us. They're not, I don't believe they're asking us to do that. And that's why Jody was asking for a word document, I believe, so we could all get together. I would certainly volunteer for that.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Resolution put together. Several on these resolutions. Of those.
So I would suggest that you start with the one that he's provided. I already read it over and it's very well-written, very supportive of the Second Amendment. It's nothing that I would consider that you would find. It's just supportive of the Second Amendment.
You are one fast reader. You know that? You can read, you are one fast reader.
I'm excessively fast reader for lots of reasons. But yes, so I would say that look at that, but there's probably minimal you'll have to change, in my opinion. Maybe tweaking it more to specific Roscommon County concerns, but.
Prosecutor prosecuting attorney, Austin County. Have you there? Tell me that they took out the word. Then why? They didn't want to, this was a commitment. Then why any conflict? They misunderstood the word sanctuary. They have sanctuary.
That's a great idea, yeah.
Oh. Also have their prosecutor and their sheriff.
Yeah.
I appreciate your service to our country. I too served in the Marine Corps for twenty-three years. I've been a lifelong conservative and I'm a lifelong member of the NRA along as a member. But I do take some offense to my colleague to the right of me. I have a lot of friends in my family who are Democrats and I don't consider them stupid. Maybe you took this out of context, but I have a lot of friends that are Democrats that are also members of, that belong, that believe in the Second Amendment. Also have friends that are conservatives that would be more in line with the Democrats. But I do great, I do take great offense. And I would, I would be remiss if I didn't make comment that a lot of my friends are Democrats. I think it was, it was a inconsiderate remark. Thank you.
I'd like to respond. Well, I was gonna say, it's maybe it should have said they were stupid. It's a stupid idea, okay?
Since they were stupid.
It's a stupid word. It's, it's a stupid idea. How's that? Is that, that?
Well, you said it, Eric, not me.
Okay. Okay, let's move forward. Number four, Jody.
Are you sure?
Yes. Same time.
Thank you, Jody, for saving us.
Is Hannah, you're looking for Hannah Lore online? Do you see her? Oh, beautiful. Okay, and then Laura's here someplace. Come on up. We've got this, don't worry. So as quick introductions, Hannah, who is online, and Laura are both here. Hannah represents the Crawford County Housing Program and Laura currently represents our Roscommon County Housing Program, which as you are aware will be completely closed March thirty-first of this year based on the failure of the budget. So Hannah came to Laura and myself and we've had several meetings since the beginning of the year. And Hannah feels that her position in Crawford County would allow her to help service Roscommon County housing. Now, the big of this is we're only talking about one small program. And this is where I'm going to have Laura take over and explain just really quickly exactly what that program is in a nice consensus way that they can do that. And you'll have to push a button.
Hello. I get you in my letter, through my departure letter, which should be in your packet for the commissioners meeting. Just a little about our program. I've got the year-end report that I just handed out to you to show how we have expended the dollars the past year and those that we were able to assist. Wasn't quite ready to give up this position, but with budget and everything, I would like to see the funds still being used to help our people. We currently secure one million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in loans, about two hundred and thirty mortgages. The county has these funds. They are secured by liens against the property. We do have some that have installment loans and some are deferred until the resident no longer lives there. So we are able to accumulate our payments from July through June. After that time, the following year, those funds may be used for emergency repairs. And then eighteen percent of those funds that are expended can be used for admin. That's what we're looking at in the agreement. These funds are utilized to help residents acquire necessities that they can't afford. Furnace wells, septic systems, roofs, electrical hazards, plumbing issues. So on the year-end report, I have what we were able to accomplish in our calendar year twenty-twenty-two. Through that program income, we expended seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. Or I'm sorry, received seventy-nine, six hundred and seventy-three dollars in our loans and two hundred and thirteen in a Richfield Township loan. And the expenditures, that's under the loans and grants that were funded. Out of those program income funds, we loaned sixty thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. We did do our Neighborhood Impact Program, which was grant money. We were able to get the homeowners applied for and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars were used in that funding. We also had funding from DHS, homeowners and veterans, four thousand, eight hundred and forty. We were able to put eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars into the community with repairs. Out of that, we did process the eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three or outstanding loans at the end of the year were one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, seven hundred and sixty-five. We did receive interest of nineteen hundred. We did have, our payments came in seventy-nine thousand, eight eighty-six. We only had one foreclosure for, with the share steed of one thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. We did disperse twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars for admin to the county. We were able to complete eleven projects and assist eighteen household members. At the bottom is a summary of those funds. We were able to assist households with them comes from ten thousand, two hundred and sixty annual to thirty-seven, seven ninety-six. Ages fifteen to eighty-six and eleven of those were disabled. We were able to put in a furnace, three wells, four roofs, hot water tank, did a handicap accessible bath. One, we were able to do windows, two doors. We were able to do a humidifier and we were actually able to do gutters under those grant programs. Your second sheet just has that detailed and it shows the time and the funding there and then again at the bottom, the summary of those funding. Do you have any questions on the year-end report?
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have the potential, the.
This, this, this is what we were talking about on the phone, wasn't it?
This is, yes.
Okay.
Where that money comes from and how we would pay for it.
Yeah, and this is gonna be done in the next, in our regular meeting.
Yes, no, well, it's going to be done in the next week, in the next two weeks, correct.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, out of this funding is what this contract that is being brought, or the agreement being brought to you today. We already have approved budgets through Medicaid and we did our public hearing back in November in hopes that we were going to continue our program. We have sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars available that we are looking at doing this so we can start expending these funds again. And from July of last year through current, we have another sixty-seven thousand available if we choose to go into an agreement to do this. I do have, these are the people already that have requested funding that I kept to town, which could not help. So the need is, I, this is one of the first counties. And they Crawford County is looking at doing the administration and that what is what the agreement is about today.
That's me. So I pass out to each of you via email the proposed inter-local agreement that would be between the Crawford County Housing Department, technically Crawford County and Roscommon County to allow the Crawford County Housing Department to facilitate the administration of Roscommon County's CDBG programs. And just so you guys know, that basically is a super fancy short term that they use for the grant program with the PI actually program income. So basically, the administration funds that you saw on Laura's year-end report that came in for last year were twelve thousand, eight forty-eight. So what this local, inter-local government agreement says is for either the more of seven thousand dollars or the eighteen percent administrative funds that the Crawford County Housing Department would be able to collect, Hannah will perform these emergency housing needs. Probably not all of them because there's quite a few there for Roscommon County. It would be technically, it's a year contract, but we would like to see it through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, which we'll have to talk to Hannah about because that would allow us to extend what we haven't been able to spend yet. Yes. Yes, because the state, this is on the state's budget. You know, there may be some wording that you would like to change, some concerns that you have, and I would like to hear those at that time. This is going this week to Crawford County as well for approval. So obviously, if they say yes, that's great, but then Hannah would be able to bring some of those concerns to them as well.
This is just for programs already in place, correct?
This is just the program income funds, yes, that we collect. And this is no new grants. This is nothing else. This is just the money that we get in from these mortgages that we're collecting.
Cleaning up the end of all this.
Yes.
And at the end, at one point, seven billion out there, so each year it would be up to you.
To find some way to reap that back.
I've been here thirty-one years.
I think Commissioner Asher.
I would like to see these funds still being used for that. And when it's near a hundred and thirty, that this contract, she has a potential expense.
Okay.
Basically, as you and I were talking on the phone, it's kind of like a, if we don't use it, we lose it. It goes back away, so we need to use it.
If we don't use it, we have to send a big check to the federal government, the state.
I think that's really important point to make. I've sat on the housing committee for the last twelve years, I believe. And prior to that, I was in the housing business and I used for my clients. You were in the business too. And we used for thirty years, I used the housing commission for my clients. It was a very good program.
We used to, grants available through there.
Yeah, I was selling people.
The county secures those mortgages. They were actually mortgages. They said these funds are loaned, they aren't freebies granted, which you could choose to grant those. In either case, we get that money in as we expend eighteen percent available for admin. Otherwise, you collect the funds and at the end of that program, you would spend the money back.
This will be on in two weeks.
In two weeks, yes. And that'll give Crawford County a chance. So if there's something that they decide they're concerned with. Because obviously, if I was, if it was flipped, you guys would be concerned that your residents would still be receiving the services that they're expecting from the housing department. The other important part of this, from a administrative standpoint, is we do have those two hundred and some odd mortgages out there that do have the payoffs need to be discharged, recorded, make sure there's insurance on it. And unfortunately, that was going to fall to the treasurer's office. Treasurer Reagan is not here, but she emphatically supports this as that will also be done by Hannah's office, working with myself and the treasurer's office.
Yes.
To listen to our chair, the collective wisdom of this board to make my decision. But as I said right now, I'm fully supportive of anything we can do to ensure our clients' needs are met. Thank you for your service thirty-one years.
Yes, thank you very much. Anything else?
And I know I need to speak up louder because we don't have a mic. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for your services, Laura. It's been a pleasure working with you.
No other questions? Thank you, Laura.
Number five, Jody, Section A.
Okay, so hopefully this one's a little quicker and a little easier. Commissioner Asher has expressed some concerns at the last meeting in regards to wording with Section Ten a chief administrative officer job description for the administrator controller, specifically in the wording about the lake level control structures. If I understood correctly, the big concern is like anybody that's in the administrative controller position oversees, you know, if it raises or lowers, whether there's a designated authority or not. I think that's a great point and would love to have it out of the job description. So I have provided with you a change to go from Section A-ten. The current is serve as custodian of and have charge of the operation, maintenance and repairs of the county courthouse, buildings and grounds, lake level control structures and repairs to the county jail to A-ten, proposed, serve as the custodian of and have charge of the operation, maintenance and repairs of all county-owned buildings and grounds, including repairs to the county jail. So I would put that on unless you guys want some changes.
I like it.
Okay.
Is this something that we have to pass in a resolution in the next meeting?
We'll put it on a motion just to make it official.
Okay, why do we, why do we wait two weeks? Oh, okay.
If it's not urgent, so then.
Yeah, it's not urgent.
Transparency.
Okay, let's say ten twenty-five.
The hammer came down, Mark. He hit the hammer.
Killing me.
Ten twenty-five, on call meeting order.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize.
Here.
Here. So move, Mr. Chair.
I would like to hold off on motion.
Per your desire, Mr. Chair.
On which motion?
Number two.
Number two, and for two weeks. We'll have Jody discuss it in our work session a little bit more. And then we'll have it for a vote right after that in two weeks.
I stand, I'll amend my motion to remove number two, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Clear call roll, please.
Yes, just a minute, please, just a minute. I'm, I'm trying to read what they just said. Yes, this one here, motion number two, got it, that's gone. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Is she magically appears?
I, there's some, on the agenda items, that some things are covered, some of its old business, some of its new business. I just want to go.
You bring up yourself, you. For a new business, you can't create an agenda. You could bring something up under.
The approval process of the agenda, I can add things in or make sure that they're covered.
For new business, you just bring it up. You can't create an agenda.
Okay, what about old business?
Old business is the same way. You can't create an agenda.
Create a specific agenda item, okay.
Approval of the minutes for two-two of twenty-three, regular meeting. There is one correction. Mr. Milburn was excused. It does not state in there states he was absent. Any other corrections?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Oh, please.
Milburn?
Yes.
Wolfson? Ostrigan?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes. Class A. Claims and accounts. The clerk has to read the amount.
Okay, that is. One thousand four hundred eighty-nine, sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
Clear call roll, please.
Ostrigan?
Yes.
Wolfson? Russo?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Carried.
Claims and accounts.
Claims and accounts, two hundred and six thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars, seventy cents.
So move. Clerk, please call roll.
Wolfson? Russo?
Yes.
Ostrigan? Milburn?
Yes.
Carried.
Number seven, public comment. Yes, sir. Please state your name and turn the mic on.
Ken Melvin, Gary's Township resident. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate Heather, Jean, Vanessa, Angie, Lori, Brenda, Julie. Krista and Danielle, Patty, International Day of Women. That, Mr. Chairman, I have basically four items that I'd like to get corrected. Because I don't know that the rest of this board fact checks the things that are said by a commissioner. That aren't necessarily truthful. The first thing was, in the first meeting. The Commissioner Ostrigan stated that the Commissioner from District Two had always been the person in charge of the dam. That's not true. The, I was elected and sworn in January two thousand and nine. And the entire year of two thousand and nine, Mr. Ed Nellis, the chairman of the board, was the person in charge of the dam. So that's not true. He also stated that in twenty-twenty-two, the Higgins Lake never reached the summer level. Well, I remember very well because it was my birthday, April twenty-fifth, when Higgins Lake reached summer level. And the next day, it was also at summer level. That's not true. Also, last week, he stated that. There was fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand cubic feet per second going through the unregulated opening. I'm going to read from the Fisheries Division report that went along, the recommendations that went along with the. Ecohydrogeology valuation of the dam. Flows of fifty cubic feet per second are a target flow rate to protect the Cut River Fisheries and cannot be achieved. And not be achieved when gates are closed. Flows of fifty cubic feet per second during the summer have a much greater likelihood of occurring in the undamaged. Dam scenarios with the gates open. Cut River flows are lower than recommended under current operation. Presently, the low-flow opening is not large enough to consistently provide the thirty-three cubic feet per second. To ninety-five percent of the natural flow. How you can come up with a number of fifty-five thousand cubic feet per second when it says that it's physically impossible? I'll let the experts argue that out. I'm not a hydrologist. I just believe people that do an independent study and make a report based on readings. Over someone that just pulls stuff out of their head. Also, a blog by Mr. Ostrigan is trying to cast dispersion on me. His own problems with what he's already done. It, it says, did Commissioner Melvin remove the apron and boulders? You know, that's, that, that's a leading statement there. And then down here, he says, I believe Commissioner Melvin initially took office in two thousand and eight. Excuse me, I was sworn in January of two thousand and nine. I could not have had anything to do with any of this before I was even placed in charge of that unregulated opening. And the rest of the dam. I would just caution you to fact-check these things. Because I don't want you sitting here and accepting statements that are made. That pretty much now are, are showing that it's a pattern of misinformation and deceit. To try and cast doubt on other things and deflect from his own problems that he's created for himself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, sir. Dan Bonamy, Beaver Creek Township. We also have properties in Beaver Creek Township on Higgins Lake, and we are worried about the lake levels of that lake. And I also would like to know, and I'm not saying anything against what he said. But those reports that he was talking about were two thousand seventeen, that's six-year-old information. So what them flow rates are today, I can't say if that's true or not. But anyways, the reason I'm up here is I talked in your session earlier about Second Amendment sanctuary. And I wanted to just bring a couple more things. Ross Common has a shooting team near your high school. Kids cannot license a weapon underneath the new rules. They have, they would have to have a parent's weapon, parent would have to be at every practice. That would be done. They couldn't go to the Drilling Sportsman's Club after school with their coach and shoot. One of the other things that I do is I take youth out for the shooting sports. I've been an archery instructor for years and also for rifle and shotgun. I've taken a number of people out for bird hunting, deer hunting. The youth is not as big a deal because I can take them with me for, and they can use my weapon when with me. I also do that for adults. And we take them out, do safe shooting classes and get them familiar with a weapon. Every fall, I loan two or three deer rifles to individuals between twenty and sixty years old. We will not be able to do that. We will not be able to take and recruit those people unless we sit with them through this new rules. With licensed firearm, unless we license our firearm to them for the season and then have to complete the purchases back and forth. And I'll, and I'll close with, appreciate you guys hearing us today, but speed is needed with this. Some of these bills are being voted on as soon as today. They're jumping through all the committee processes, they're jumping right across and, and breaking protocols that are in Lansing right now. So if you guys can do anything to expedite a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back.
Morning.
Please state your name.
Good morning, I'm good. My name is Charles Howe, just have a quick question for the board with the exception of Mr. Ostrigan. What I would like to know, well, actually, first of all, we all know that Mr. Ostrigan, on his first day of office, or one of the first days, went and damned the lake. That's a felony. He further admitted to that felony via email. With no regard for the people downstream, the wildlife and the fish involved in that lake, et cetera. Currently under investigation is my understanding, pending the prosecutor and the completion of that investigation. My question is simply, why is he still taking active part of this board? When he is under suspicion and admitted committing a felony against the county? He's also filed a lawsuit against the county, which is pending in the Supreme Court. Where I come from, in business, in other places, if you are under investigation for working against your place of employment or office. You're generally suspended until the outcome of that investigation happens. At a minimum, you recuse yourself of any action or participation in any events around that felony. Which at this case would be the lake operation. That's my question. I don't probably expect I'll get an answer, but I'd like you to consider that. And please consider suspending him pending the outcome of that ex, the investigation.
No, be suspended. I'm an elected official, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we, we don't.
Actually, you weren't allowed to ask my question because I had the floor.
Yes, sir.
However, in answer, you are an elected official. So you know what? Your choices should be resign or recuse. And you don't have guts to do either. You're here specifically for your own personal agenda. That's pretty obvious. Without consideration to the other people on the lake, the wildlife, the fisheries, or even the people downstream. Your concern is being able to take your boat off your list. That's your big concern.
Don't have a boat on a lift, I'm not here for a personal agenda. You are.
I'm sorry.
You're here for a personal agenda.
Okay. He made a statement. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Is there any other public comment? Yes. Yes, sir.
Hello, I've been a resident of Roscommon County. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, can you state your name, please?
Leroy Johnston.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Roscommon County for fifty-six years. I'm a gun owner, I'm a Second Amendment supporter, I'm a CPL holder. And I am absolutely opposed to my county putting out any sort of a statement that says that they're going to violate the laws of this state. It is not given to individual citizens to determine constitutionality. It is not given to a county sheriff to determine constitutionality of our laws. There are processes for that. Every citizen can do it. But to simply state that you will not enforce a law that has been passed by the legislature of the state of Michigan. Smacks of basically rebellion to me. Couple of other things that I'd like to state in this, as far as the three main parts of the law go. For the background checks, red flag laws and safe storage. According to a Detroit News poll from two days ago, all three of those items. Enjoy a seventy-five percent or better support ratio among the residents of Michigan. That's across all demographics that you want to pick out. That's including gun owners, that's including Republicans. Second, this country has a problem, unique among the world. We are the only place where mass shootings take place on a, if not daily, weekly basis. It's, and a lot of it has to do simply with a numbers game. I mean. If you put more weapons out there, more people are going to use them and more people are going to get hurt. That's all there is to it. And third, I'd like to bring up to the commissioners that. The FBI recently released a study from last year's homicides that said that the over twenty that they deemed political in nature. Were all committed by right-wingers. I take great offense to Mr. Ostrigan stating that the reason that we have this problem is because we have stupid Democrats in Lansing. And lastly, I'll close with this. Remember that when you hear of anybody saying tyrants and I want to be able to defend myself against government tyrants. You guys could be government tyrants. You're the county commission, you're elected official. When does this stop? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comments out there or anybody in Zoom land? Okay.
Sam.
Please come up. Haven't seen you in a while, young man. Please state your name.
Samuel Vincent Bedoin Jr., Lion Township resident. I haven't been here in years. I used to come here with Ed Nellis a lot when he was on the board. I wouldn't be just sitting here. But somebody made a comment that rubbed me the wrong way. We all know who Randy Stevenson is, we all knew who Ed Stern is. And most of you know who Michelle Stevenson. I've always looked at, you know, we should look at voting for the person, not their affiliation. And that's how I've been all my life. And all three of those individuals I have supported through the years that they started in office. Their signs have been on my yard in that regard. They all represent the Republican Party. Though, I take offense to what this gentleman said, I'm pointing to him. Yes. And it's almost like he being discriminatory, and I take greater offense to that. So I wish maybe he would learn. That you're here for the safety and well-being of the citizens, nothing else. And to use good judgment when you're making decisions on behalf of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you. Number eight, controllers report, Jody had to take off and she was excused. Number nine, we have a lot of correspondence, it's in front of you, goes from A to R. And it's in your packet. Move right along, number ten, monthly department reports. Rex, do you have anything? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun. We don't have none. Number eleven, visitors.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize him with Bellavon, he attends most of the COAB's and he's a normal, he comes here quite often and obviously her weatherly, I, you should be sitting up here, actually, it looks like we're getting kind of sparse up here this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Unfinished and new business, number twelve. I would like to start with, I was directed to contact Water Resource Eagle in Gaylord by the commissioners. Excuse me. Which I did talk to Scott, Resmussix, I know I chopped his name off, his last name on, and regarding Higgins Lake control structure. He was out there, he told me on February seventh, along with some people from Eagle and DNR, and he said he did not see any scouring in the control structure or underneath on the ground. My suggestion to the commissioners after talking with him would be to, and I did talk to Chase too, and he agrees, let's wait until the special assessment happens for Higgins Lake. And if we still feel, or if anybody still feels there's scouring, then let's move forward at this point. Right now, if we pull a permit, if it gets denied, it's just a waste of money for the simple fact is we don't have no resources to fight that, we don't have the funds. I would like to wait until the special assessments done and then we can move forward, just like we're doing with the other two control structures. Yes, sir.
So Spicer Engineering in two thousand and ten came and did a report, said there was scouring. I went out there, I saw scouring, Chase went out there, he saw scouring, you went out there with Rex and you saw scouring. DNR or Eagle comes back and says there's no scouring, I would like to see the report from Eagle that said there's scouring. You know, Eagle doesn't go to the bathroom without filing a report and doing paperwork on it. I want to see the paperwork on it, we should file for a, an official permit, not permit change, but to get this, the lake of control structure back up to what it was back in two thousand and seven and we have photos, photos don't lie. Okay, the, that lake level control structure looks nothing like what it did back then, what it does right now. So I would say who was it with, Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
He needs to get us the report, we need to spend a hundred dollars, I'll pay the hundred dollars for the permit, requesting the permit change. We need to get something official back from them to protect ourselves as a commission. Because right now with the lake levels are going to drop again this summer and it's going to be a situation where we did not do our job in asking for a permit. If you guys back in two thousand and nineteen would have asked for a permit change, this commission would never have been sued. It would have been Eagle that would have been sued. We need to shift the burden from this commission to Eagle, we need to ask for a permit change for, to get that, the lake level control structure back up to where it was originally back in two thousand and seven. Spend the money, get the burden off this commission.
Today Chase did talk with Rex and he doesn't believe there's scouring.
No, it's evident. Maybe scouring was the wrong word.
Okay, whatever it is.
It's evident and it appears to be the fine material in that stream bed is washed away, which lowers the stream bed. I mean, it's evidence, you can see it from standing on top.
Sure.
Now, I'm speaking from somebody that was in business in I could plum a house without using no level. Opposed to somebody that just got out of college and standing looking at a bunch of water. And Chase measured it and said, yeah, there's been a drop there. But right now what we're fighting is eagle.
Is who?
Eagle.
Okay.
It's not eagle, eagle is a majestic bird.
Yeah, yeah, well. I call him something else.
My concern in this matter is we filed for a permit right now to do some, a temporary permit to do some work. They turn it down. And my contention is, I think this board agrees, once the special assessment district set up on that lake, we probably need to send in an engineering for, you know, look at all deficiencies that may exist with that dam. And then apply for a permit to correct all those deficiencies. And I think if we get denied on this little issue right now, that one's automatically going to be thrown out of that next process.
They can automatically throw it out all they want, that doesn't change the facts, facts are facts.
I know.
Yeah, but.
But if they throw it out, then we got no words. So you don't throw it out.
They're going to throw, they're going to throw this one out and according to you, they're never willing to put anything in writing. They need to put it in writing, we need to find out really what their stance is, we need to take the burden off of this commission. Okay.
It's a burden at this point, Eric, until we get the special assessment, then we can move forward like we're doing with other control structures.
The problem with that is it could take two years on.
It's not going to take two years.
But, but you, you have a point, we should get a letter from them stating what their investigation.
I want to report, I want their report that instead of just talking to you verbally and just saying, oh, we can't do it, I wasn't there. But, okay, so I have a tremendous mistrust.
But don't hold your breath on that. Because I have been subject to their investigations before and I was told, once I was cleared, you will get nothing in writing from this department.
That's a heck of a way to run a government organization.
We both agree on that.
Well, I, I say we ask them for something, report, so their tail's on the line instead of this commission. Right now, this commission, we have low levels this summer, you, you're just, you're just increasing the liability, okay, of, of what could end up happening here with this commission as far as monetary damages.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask for?
Yeah, give them a call back and see what they say.
We asked them in writing, not give them a call, ask them to give some, right, we asked, we'd send them an official letter asking them, okay, for report on what they came up with, the, the CFS and so forth, and it wasn't fifty-five thousand CFS, it was fifty-five CFS. I don't know where he came up with fifty-five thousand. But it's, we need to get something in writing, we need to apply in writing and we need to get something in writing for them explaining that there is no problem with the dam because you saw it, I saw it, Chase saw it, Spicer saw it and all of a sudden they're here nor evil seen.
You know, and right now they're still, he told me they're working on the investigation still. They did have concerns about the rocks being back there. Water resource, ego.
You, you never said that, you didn't say that at the beginning of the meeting, you didn't tell, say that, you didn't say that.
I said they were there on February seventh for an investigation.
And then they, you reported back.
I just said that five minutes ago. That's why he said he was there.
When he contacted you, this came to light.
Yes.
I thought the investigation was complete.
No.
Okay.
No.
I, I did not understand that.
Yeah.
It sounded like they were there for an investigation and there's nothing wrong, didn't see any scouring. I mean, that's what was said.
Yeah.
I think it probably was an investigation, see what's going on with all the commotion.
Yes, that's what they were there for. On February seventh.
But we could still ask for that writing.
Sure.
Results of that.
I got a couple of quick comments on that too, because they were addressed. The gentleman was speaking earlier about my recusing myself, I have recused myself, sir, from the litigation. And I have recused myself from being the delegated authority. That is, I have recused myself from that, so don't say, don't shake your head saying, no, I have. I'm talking to the board also.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Sir, there, yeah.
Are we still on old business, new business?
Yes.
Bring some things up.
Uh, yes.
Done, Mary?
I know, I got a couple of other things, plan of action, resolution regarding the delegated authority for the lakes.
Well, you need to get stuff like that, you need to get with me before Wednesday, before the board meeting, so we could discuss it.
Earlier, I was going to bring that as update.
So you know, you, stuff like that, no.
That is old business.
Stuff like that, we need to discuss in a work session. You can't create an agenda, and that's what I said earlier.
This is old business though, we talked about this under old business, that's why I talked about it in the work session, had to come up during the session or during them. County email issues on, on our, we were going to, you were going to investigate and get back to us on requiring us to do, county, use our county email addresses as opposed to our personal email addresses, what did you come up with? You said you were going to check into that?
Yeah, I thought we were using our county email addresses, I apologize. You made it clear you don't want us to use our other ones, so.
Well, not that I, I think it need.
Well, it's been twelve years, I've been using mine, Mark's been using his.
We all agree that we're going to start using our county email address.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, okay? And I understand the motion for Jody's job description is going to be what handled in the next meeting?
Yes, this was discussed.
That's all I, that's all I wanted to talk about.
Do you have?
Yes.
Okay.
He's already addressed one about personal emails. We talked back and a while back about having a written plan of future operation and maintenance of our dams. I was wondering how we're coming along with that.
Nothing, uh, and just, once we get all the special assessments, then our attorney could draw something up, we could look at.
But I thought we, we were going to have a plan of how we're going to progress from this point on.
And I brought that up earlier, Rex.
In two weeks, Stacy's going to give a presentation.
It'll, it'll give us information so we can draft this plan.
Yes.
Because this isn't, this isn't a legal document, we just want a plan of action in writing.
Yes.
Um, the other thing I had to bring up was, you know, back in January, we brought up about how important it was to get our village renewed or restored. Since I heard nothing on that, I did some checking on Monday with the clerk. It's too late for, to file for an election this spring. You could have an election in August on it. We would have to pay for the full amount of the election cost.
Yeah, we talked about that, that's going to be very expensive.
It's going to be around thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it's up to this board to decide whether or not they want to do that. You know, um, other than that, it'd probably be next February before we can bring it back forth.
Or we wait, what, two years?
Well, February, next election, whatever, and I think there's one in, in next February.
Would the cost be any different then?
It would be free. It'd be free.
It would be free in February?
Yeah, so I'm saying just wait till February.
I'm just bringing this information so maybe the board can have a consensus of what they want to do.
Always, with your permission, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This village, correct me if I'm wrong, this field twice before. Economy still hasn't picked up where we would hope that it would be. My guess, this is just my unsolicited guess, that if we put a village out, this junction would probably would get the same results as we did last time. Hey, I fully support you to the free election, is a chance for the board and the public, word in the public, trying to get some of that cement, does guy in Mexico. It gives the board and the public an opportunity to be able to reassess their commitment toward those, those activities. So I'd, I'd be in favor of waiting.
I, I think thirty-five grand to hold a special in August versus February, which is only a few months away.
Yeah.
I don't know what you think, Rex, what, I mean.
Well, I'm just bringing the information for, you know, so that we can put that subject aside, you know.
I wish we would have been able to get it done in May, then it would have been worth while, but only four months.
Yeah, and spend that kind of money.
But what happened, what happened with the one in May?
Um, the filing deadline is vast.
Right, but I thought.
Passed in February.
Okay, so that just never got checked into?
Well, no, there's not going to be an election in May. You know, countywide.
We still would have to pay for it.
Yeah.
But we could have had one.
Because information came late.
Okay.
Um, we're past the deadline on that one anyway.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I want to talk about this stupid comment, okay? I'm going to read exactly what it said. I didn't say all Democrats are stupid, I said, I said, the Democrats know that they're moving forward, I'm talking about the, our legislature in Lansing, that's who I'm referring to. Because you just can't fix stupid and that's what we have in Lansing, it's quote, a bunch of stupid Democrats.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not saying all, I, I, friends of mine, many, 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 many friends of mine are Democrats. I'm talking about the stupid Democrats in Lansing.
Yeah, but I just don't like that word, stupid.
Okay, what are you doing?
Right. Okay.
It doesn't matter if you'd like it or not.
Kind of going off, so I've been, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You know, we attack the issue, we don't attack the person or the party. That's just not what we do, it's not the gentlemanly thing to do and I don't do that, that's not how I conduct myself.
Okay.
Let's move on, number thirteen, most, most resolutions, I apologize. Number one.
Move to authorize Vanessa Varner, Roscommon County Emergency Management Coordinator to submit application to the Michigan State Police for a one thousand five hundred dollar hazardous materials emergency preparedness, HMEP, grant to be utilized for expenses that support and facilitate the development, training and or updating of required plans and practices related to the local emergency planning committee.
So move.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. Clerk call roll, please.
So.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Committee reports, Rex.
Um, the only thing I had to talk was, was the hazardous waste deal and we've already discussed that.
Okay, Eric?
Yes, actually Rex also attended the mental health clinic along with Darlene. Found it very, very interesting on everything that was going on with the issues that we have here, it was a four hour meeting, it was quite, quite a length of time and we learned a lot. It's, it's very, very difficult situation here and in all counties and dealing with the mental health issues and hopefully we can continue to support that program.
Mark.
The report, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you do, we.
Do we do?
Airport is one, yeah, we did attend an airport meeting.
That's right, airport.
And, and two weeks, Chuck Quinn, that pronounces.
Oh, Chuck Quinn.
Yep. There'll be a motion to put him on the airport committee, Chuck's a good person and I think he'll do very well seeing on the airport committee. Also, I did claims and accounts. And that's it. A public comment, number fifteen. Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Once again, Ken Melvin, Gary's Township resident. A few more things I'd like to address. The commissioner made a comment that lake levels are going to drop this summer. What kind of insanity is it when you expect different re- What kind of insanity is it when you expect different results from what has happened every year since anybody can remember? A lake level drops in the summertime. I mean, evaporation is, is a tremendous physical thing that happens to a lake. The scouring issue. I, I was at that dam a lot for fourteen years. When I started in nineteen, in, in, in two thousand and nine, there was nothing but rocks as far as you can see. There's no sand in front of that opening where the lake level, where the Cut River exits the lake. And, and downstream, you have a water flow through that small opening that small fish can't overcome. It's tremendous. This commissioner admitted to rolling a bowling ball-sized rock through that opening early in January. A bowling ball-sized rock got swept through there, and, and you expect sand to stay in that opening and stay on the bottom? There's no scouring. There's fast water flow that small objects can't resist. So if you dropped a front-end loader full of sand in front of that opening, it would get swept through by the force of the water. And it would be swept downstream, past the rocks, until the water flow slowed down. There's sand down river from the opening where the water flow diminishes. Yeah, he, he comes and he says he wants you to do an investigation on what happened to the rocks. He's admitted to rolling bowling balls through the opening, and he wants you to investigate what happened to the rocks. I, I mean, it, it's, it's like the brain is not connected to the mouth. The money that you spent for him to go to commissioner training school? I, he should refund it. He doesn't even know how this meeting runs. He's constantly interrupting. The Spicer report, this guy says, you know, the Spicer report i- i- is, is older than the report that I quoted. It is March of two thousand and seventeen. That, that report's older on, on the basis of his statement. Well, you shouldn't even consider the Spicer report. So, um, it's just, I have sympathy for this board and what you have to deal with. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Number sixteen, a German. Suck it, all in favor?